Good evening. I'd like to call the October 2, 2012 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education to order. Krista, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brazel, Mrs. Brazel Spinella, Ms. Katz.
Here.
Mrs. Ma.
Yes.
Dr. Overmeyer Velasquez.
Yes.
Mr. Putterman.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Student Representatives Tyree Seymour.
Here.
And Student Representative Kendall Tier.
Here.
Ty, will you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance? We, I would like to propose a revision to the agenda order, which is that the Item 6B legislative update be moved up prior to unfinished business. Any discussion?
So move.
Okay. Actually, I guess we don't have to formally ratify that. So, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Oh, do we, right, we do have to vote on that. Okay. Okay. Now gone, moves. Who seconds?
I second it.
Terry seconds. All in favor? Please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We will, there is no student participation tonight. We'll move on to public communications. Mr. John Joyce has signed up to speak. Mr. Joyce, please come forward.
I'm here at this moment as a representative of the Webster Hill Elementary School PT Board as a Board of Ed liaison, and I've been asked to report to you the following. At the last PT Board meeting, there was a lively and robust discussion about the latest assessments and parent responses. Seismic shockwaves went through a number of households when lower-than-expected rating, academic rating reports were given. Over-anxious parents became more anxious. Neurotic parents spiked in their neuroticism. Overwhelmed parents fainted. Self doubt increased three notches and self-recrimination quadrupled. The flashcards came out in a great number of households, and play was postponed and canceled altogether. Self-questioning, nagging doubt raged for several days while data sunk in. "Who is the blame?" was the implicit and explicit thought pattern. Those responses were recorded from parents who are integral to the essential functioning of the school. What does this mean, and who do you go to to get the bottom of this? "Your homeroom teacher?" was the reply. "Oh." A great sigh of relief was heard from the gang seated around the large conference room table. We are all well-acquainted with the staff. We have networked and gavered with one another about the inner and outer workings of the staff for several years. There were veterans among us. Then a disturbing issue arose. What about the other parents? Working parents, single parents, new parents to the Webster Hill community, parents who blindly trust the school knows best and will watch over their children equally, depressed parents, angry parents. Would they call the homeroom teacher? Did they know the process at all? It is one thing to know to call the homeroom teacher, yet it is another thing to actually do it. Would the reactions be supportive and sympathetic to the underachieving child? Would it possibly be demeaning and humiliating, overly harsh, thereby undermining the child's self-esteem and burgeoning confidence? Perhaps a different labeling of the category could prevent negative overreactions. Below average at this time, growth potential intact, nothing to worry about, within normal limits. Expected outcome of this time: don't worry. Perhaps a planned contact would help. I will be calling you next week, Friday. Stop in and see me after or before school. I'm available. We will be buying nonfiction libraries for each of the classrooms this year in preparation for the focus of the Common Core standards. Yet there is nagging, embarrassing, yet there is the nagging, embarrassing condition of the auditorium seats, most held together by duct tape. Should we raise funds to refurbish those seats? Then there's the issue of fundraising. Do I get three minutes or five minutes?
As always, three minutes, please.
I'm representing a group of people from the school.
Our rules are different from the Town Council's rules. You have three minutes. You may take another three minutes at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board?
I have a question. Could I represent myself for three minutes?
Mr. Joyce, you have three minutes at the beginning of the meeting. You have three minutes at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board before we move on in our agenda? Okay, so we now move to a very exciting announcement. Mr. Joyce, I respectfully ask you to please take your seat so we can move on in our agenda.
You can move on in your agenda. I am protesting.
Mr. Joyce, we don't want to get into a battle of wits here. Would you please just take your seat, or you will be escorted to your seat. You know, you've been coming to our meetings for seven years. You know our rules. Would somebody like to motion a brief recess?
I move that we recess for five minutes.
Thank you. All is in favor?
I second.
Second, right. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We'll recess for five minutes. All right. Never a dull moment here at the Board of Ed meetings. So now, it is time for a very exciting announcement. We are going to invite our legislative delegation up to the table to talk with us about some work that they've done. So we have State Senator Beth Bye, Representative Andrew Fleischman, Representative Joe Varengia, and Representative Brian Becker. And collectively, they represent all of West Hartford, and then some. So Representative Fleischman, I think we're going to start with you. Is that right?
Thank you. We really appreciate being here tonight, and you're making time on your agenda. This is really a great moment for all, I know I speak for all of us when I say it's just a wonderful moment. In public life, there's different kinds of news that you get to deliver, and it's nice to be able to bring such good news to you tonight. And let me just say that it wouldn't be possible if it weren't for the way this delegation works together. It was a pleasure working with Senator Bye, Representative Varengia, Representative Becker to make sure that what we're about to announce passed both chambers in concurrence and was signed by the governor. So you all know that West Hartford has some great town magnet schools. Until now, school construction for a local magnet has been treated exactly the same as school construction for any school. So in West Hartford, that's meant that if you wanted to make changes, or you wanted to build new a magnet school, there was roughly 40% reimbursement for the town of West Hartford. I'm happy to say that we got through both chambers and signed by the governor diversity schools legislation, which essentially ensures that for towns like ours, support for an excellent local magnet school goes up to 80%. So as long as that school is open to all town residents, which schools like Charter Oak Academy and Smith Academy are, you qualify, and you can show a plan of how you're going to develop the school, you qualify for that 80% level of reimbursement. And if we can focus in on Charter Oak Academy, you know, and most folks who pay attention know, that they've got a great faculty, a great staff, a great curriculum. And we're hoping that you're able to use this new support to have the inside and the outside of the school properly match, to have an exterior facade that aligns with the excellence within that academy. West Hartford deserves a great school facility that's appropriate for an international baccalaureate academy. Now, how you use this 80% support from the state is really up to you and the community and the town, and we'll look forward to the conversation that you engage in. But I'm just here to say we are so happy to have secured the support for you, and we look forward to working with you, to making sure it's used as, in the best ways possible, and that there are no, there are no stumbles along the road. And with that, I'm happy to turn the microphone over to our great State Senator Beth Bye.
Good evening. Pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for having us. Representative Fleischman, as Chair of our Education Committee, did a wonderful job explaining what this legislation does. I just wanted to quickly say that, you know, serving on this board with you all was such a pleasure, and we had one, a basic tenet about managing our schools, and that was that families would have choice, and that that would be a tenet as a Board of Education. I know you've continued that. I would say it really started in West Hartford, I don't know, in the early 2000s, late 90s, that we would say families would have choices. And if you look at magnet schools around us, West Hartford residents, though they love their neighborhood schools, and the vast majority of families choose their neighborhood schools, we send more students to elementary magnets and elementary magnet preschools than any other town in the Hartford region, so we also have parents who are very educated consumers. This change in the statute that allows you to develop a magnet school with a brand-new facility like other magnets have, I think, just reinforces that tenet that this board has had since the late 90s. And I think, as Representative Fleischman did such a good job of saying, it gives the children of Charter Oak Academy and Smith Academy, which Smith has been renovated more recently, the facility they deserve. And families have said pretty loud and clear that facility matters. And so I'm just really pleased to be here to give you a tool to develop a magnet school from the state of Connecticut. And I think all four of us believe this is equitable for West Hartford and exciting for West Hartford. But as my colleague said so aptly, it's now up to the community to decide if they want to take advantage of this tool and how they want to take advantage of this tool. But I have to say, in my time in the legislature, sitting here right now, is about the most exciting thing that I've been able to announce, and it wouldn't be possible without such a strong delegation and the confidence that the Town Council and the Board of Education will listen to the community and take advantage of this opportunity for all children in West Hartford. So thank you so much for having us tonight and giving us this chance to make a very special announcement. I'm going to turn it over to Representative Varengia, who has walked those halls.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. You know, I haven't been involved in politics for quite some time now. You have your good days and you have your bad days, and today is one of those days where it's certainly all worth it. And to be here today to announce a funding source of 80% from the state of Connecticut for either a new or renovated school is unprecedented, and it's pretty exciting. And it's not only exciting for the school folks, but also for that particular neighborhood. This could really serve as a pillar to the Elmwood area and those neighbors that surround the school. So as we move forward, and I think the other exciting piece of this bill is that it really puts it into the hands where it belongs: the local boards, the local council, and more importantly, the members of the community. The member of the community, the members of the community will decide what's going to happen down there, working with the policy leaders here in town, and I think that's pretty important. And at the end of the day, I'm sure it's going to be something special for all. As many of you know, I serve as a police officer in town. The majority of my time in the police department has been in the Community Relations Division. As part of a community relations function, I spent 15 years in just about every school here in West Hartford. And as this debate moves forward into the community, I think at the end of the day, we all agree that it's Charter Oak's time. Compared to the other physical conditions of the schools throughout the town, I think at the end of the day, we'll all agree that, again, this is the time for Charter Oak. So thank you for having us, and I really look forward to, again, the community involvement and working closely with the board as well. So this won't be the last time you see us. Thanks.
And here's Representative Becker.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo the words of my colleagues tonight. I agree with them. It's very exciting to be here before you to give you this news. I think this is an exciting opportunity, not just for Elmwood, not just for that neighborhood, but for the entire town. Putting a top-notch facility in place with a top-notch international baccalaureate education should be such a great draw for students throughout the town. This is a great thing for the town of West Hartford, and we're just so happy to be here. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That is indeed great news. You know, for many, many years, I've been on the board now, nine years, and for virtually all of that time, I, and many of us, have been itching to do something about Charter Oak and to help that school, enhance that neighborhood. And indeed, Joe, it is now Charter Oak's time, and let that be a mantra as we go forward. So what we are thinking that we're going to do on the heels of your announcement is form a community advisory committee. You all referenced community input. So form a community advisory committee. Over the next two weeks, we'll kind of try to identify people, invite people to participate in that committee, and hopefully announce the composition of that committee at our next board meeting, which is October 16, two weeks from tonight. The charge of that committee will be to, most broadly, I think, do two things. So Representative Varengia, you kind of referenced the build versus renovate choice or option. So that's kind of the first thing that we'll ask this committee to do, is to oversee a broader community input process to help answer that question. The second thing that we expect this advisory committee to do in overseeing a broader community input will be to help identify features that would be included in a renovated or a new school. Features, you know, architectural features, design features, functional features, things like, you know, different configurations of classrooms potentially to reflect how learning takes place more in smaller groups going forward, or expanded space for a family resource center, or more classes for pre-K, or whatever it might be. And so, you know, we will seek input from the broad community through this advisory group. It'll be up to the advisory group to kind of figure out what that process would look like. We would hope there would be opportunities for input throughout Elmwood, so potentially at Charter Oak, at Smith, at Elmwood Community Center. Fast-forwarding, we would hope to be able to encourage the council to vote on appropriating capital funds for architectural fees in the April, in their April adoption of the Capital Improvement Budget. So as you back the timeline out backwards from there, we are interested in having the community input phase of this process be completed by, roughly by Thanksgiving. There, no doubt, will be lots of opportunities and different vehicles for community input. As some of you know, I ran the superintendent's search process four years ago. I remember we got input from 437 different people, and it would be great to replicate that this time around as well. So those are, those are the next steps. I know that board members have a couple of questions for you, and perhaps want to, we want to have a conversation with ourselves in, with the public looking in, just so the public can have a better understanding of what we are thinking going forward. And whatever we don't talk about tonight, there's plenty of time going forward to talk, to cover other ground. We see this as the beginning of an ongoing dialogue with everybody in the community, all of the elected officials who work so hard to support our community, and I think it's going to be a very exciting process. And dare I say, I am hopeful that we can have something for our children to walk into in the fall of 2015. We'll see. I'm sure people are starting hostile glances at me right now, but that, that would be the board's hope. So, having said that, does anybody else want to offer up anything? Go ahead, Terry.
I've got a couple of things to say. First of all, thank you very much, all of you, not only for coming here tonight, but, I mean, this is the easy part. We all know when the hard part has been, and it's been for quite a while you've been working on this. It's never easy to get anything through. The, you know, what was it? Kevin Sullivan said that bills, you bring up a bill one year, and we ignore you just completely, and we bring it up a second year, and we put it off in some committee, and then you bring it up a third year, and we finally pass it just to get rid of you. And you got this through. It took a lot of careful work with a lot of people, both within the legislature and outside of the legislature, and I really, we, I deeply appreciate it because I know how much effort went into it. This is one of those ones that I would say scores really well for the town, and it took heightened interest for the town and lowered levels of ego to do this all over the place. I'm very impressed with you. So thank you so much for the work. You probably know I've been interested in doing something appropriate at Charter Oak for many years.
So that makes me think, Bruce, you mentioned the issue of community input and your experience four years ago. Wasn't one of the things that you did, an online kind of survey thing? Maybe that would be a good thing for us to look at, again, some, get some input from the whole town that way. Let everybody have access to it, and I'd love to see something like that done. There is one thing that I want to be absolutely clear about, and I don't know who wants to answer this, or is, this is clearly that a big decision before us, before, not just us, but for the community and for themselves, and there's a lot of emotion around this, is renovation versus rebuilding. And there are arguments both ways. I've gone through this once before with the Charter Oak community. It's an interesting issue, but I want to be absolutely sure. So could you, could one of you reassure me that either one of those decisions, if we renovate or rebuild, there's still an 80% reimbursement rate for that? Because I'd like to be clear before I made a mistake.
We knew when we were working on this legislation that that issue would be a significant one for West Hartford or any of the other five communities that potentially could avail themselves of this opportunity. And so we were careful in the drafting, and then I just, you know, I double-checked at the time that we were going to move it through the House, and I've double-checked since, and the answer is unequivocally that it's 80% reimbursement, whether you renovate or you build new.
I appreciate that, Andy, because I remember having a conversation with you one time about the bill that you passed versus what came out of whatever the end process was when you actually read, maybe it was regulations, and the two seemed to have been created by two unfriendly committees. And so this case, it's all the way straight through, and that's very helpful to hear.
I don't think any regulatory authority could read this any way other than what we've just described. They don't have the power to do so.
If I could just make one comment, Chairman Putterman, in your comments about public input, I think that one thing that's important to keep in mind is that for the architectural, certainly, it's an earlier timeframe, but having been involved in numerous school construction projects, I think there's an ongoing need for community input, and sometimes, you know, a need or an expressed community need comes up later, and you're talking about the fall of 2015 at the outside, and I would expect that there would be community input, you know, up until the shovels in the ground, because sometimes good ideas come up later. And I know that was your intent, but I just want to be clear that, with you, that my experience in building projects is sometimes a wall goes up and someone says, "It'd be a good idea to put a window so the kids could look outside," or whatever, and the architect says, "Good idea." So that I think you'll have good ideas for the next couple of years coming, and we're very fortunate to have a community that's very active with great ideas. And I think, certainly you know that, that Charter Oak has incredible input and advocates who I think will probably continue to have ideas beyond Thanksgiving, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification. You know, in an effort to kind of focus on the immediate next step, we kind of didn't address the down the road, but certainly our vision would be that whatever advisory committee we put together to help with kind of the initial decision-making processes would remain in place, they could reconstitute themselves if they wanted, but would remain in place all the way through, particularly at the point of helping to provide input into actual design, and then potentially even reviewing designs. You know, the Connecticut Science Center downtown perhaps is the most visible example of public input into a design process, and I, in my mind at least, that was highly successful. I do want to make one other note before I turn this over to any of my other colleagues. Between now and when we kind of present to the Town Council in April, there's a lot of work that has to get done, a lot of due diligence, a lot of financial analysis that has to take place. We need to understand costs. We need to understand, I understand in the legislation, there is a, there's a reference to eligible costs, so, you know, if there are certain things in a renovation that are not eligible, we need to understand that. It is kind of, as I read the legislation and think about this, it strikes me that it's possible, in fact, that ultimately it could be less expensive for the town to build a new school, and even build a larger new school than to renovate the existing school. So that's an exciting possibility. You know, that's just speculation at this point. We have to run the numbers and figure all that out. But that is what will happen. But that is what will happen between now and April. We are going to, the plan at least, would be to give the town council a package with, you know, comprehensive rationale so that they can be comfortable in making whatever decision they would make.
Well, of course, the first thing I have to say to you guys is, is welcome, and again, thank you for the hard work. I know how much hard work went into this. I know how much dialogue and conversation there have been over the last few years, and, you know, we, we just can't thank you guys enough. And I have to be honest, I got chills when you were announcing it. I think that's the first time at the board I've, I've really, and I, I kind of don't want to talk about the details. I kind of want to just bask in this moment. But I, I also just want to, I want to reiterate for folks tuning in later to whom it wasn't clear, we are getting an 80% reimbursement for a new school or a renovation from the state. That is unbelievable, and you guys did that, and, and it's just incredible. And as a board, I think we're all sort of speechless and have chills. And so, you know, we've been talking about Charter Oak since before I was on the board, and we all know, and, and I think Representative Varengia mentioned it, or as we like to call them, officer-friendly, it is a wonderful heart. It's a place with, it has incredible academics, but it also has a wonderful heart. It has a wonderful spirit. And now this is the opportunity to make it the shining example on the outside that it is on the inside. I may now have wonderful, close friends who go to Charter Oak, including perhaps the children of some of the people sitting at this table. And I know the kids who go there love it, and the parents love it. And I think that what's wonderful about this is it's not just what we're going to see on the outside, but it's that we're given the opportunity to share the wonderful heart and soul of this school with the rest of the town. I mean, that's really what this is about, is creating more classrooms and more space and opening up to the rest of the town. And this is the point where we have to, you know, really reach out to the community for vision. So, you know, start thinking about your vision. What is the vision of what, of, of what we can do, how we can be, keep what we have, and enhance it, and bring it to the rest of the community? So I do have a question in that, though. Along the spirit of, one of the ways that we obviously know we can attract other families from, from outside the immediate community is to have pre-K classes. Does this 80% reimbursement, can it be used to cover pre-K classes, or we have to stick with the K through, K through five model?
Preschool classroom is an allowable expense as a, as a public school if that's what this board decides as part of the program there. I know Bruce mentioned, you know, the Family Resource Center at Charter Oak is a jewel in this community. Like we're talking about, they have families from every zip code in West Hartford that attend their programs every week. So there's already, you know, a draw to the Family Resource Center programs, and, you know, enhancing something like the Family Resource Center or deciding on an early childhood focus, I believe Charter Oak already has a preschool, is, is an allowable expense. And I think, you know, as, as Chairman Putterman said, there's analysis that will go on, and I know I've had conversations with Assistant Superintendent Moore about, you know, space and allowable space and space waivers and all those kinds of things. And I think that, I think it's just going to take careful planning that, I think all four of us sit here and say, "We know that will take place, and you'll collaborate with the State Department of Education and their Bureau of School Facilities," or now it's, it's a whole nother department that Representative Fleishman will remember more than me. So, you know, there are a lot of possibilities, and it will depend on the community input in that, and community needs and expressed community needs, so.
You mentioned Assistant Superintendent Moore. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this at the beginning. Dr. List is with her sister, who is undergoing emergency surgery out of state, and so is not here with us tonight, and Tom Moore is sitting in, in her place. And I know she's very disappointed that she couldn't be here for this meeting of all meetings to, to kind of, as Ellen says, to bask in, in this, because as many of you know, Karen kind of made her mark in West Hartford at Smith, you know, in, in that neighborhood, and has been very committed to helping the kids at Charter Oak all through the years. And so I know she's sorry to, to not be here, but we welcome you, Tom, instead.
Welcome, Tom. This is very exciting news. I, I signed up to be on the Board of Ed for precisely this kind of thing. So unlike my colleagues, I, I get to bask in this kind of immediate news very quickly. My timing is maybe better, who knows? So yeah, I, I live in this broader community, and I'm excited for the, for the students, the kids, the parents. So thank you for being great advocates for a community and getting this. And also the vision, I mean, all these things, we understand the kind of, the nuance of the kind of legislative process, or we don't understand, but also having the vision, the imagination, to get there in the first place and then make it action. That is a rare thing. And even perhaps rarer in this moment is that we're in the middle of an economic crisis, I don't know if you've heard, and to have this 80% opportunity come towards us is just unheard of. It's really even more exciting because of that. And speaking of history, I can't help but think about these kinds of moments historically, and I'm thinking about, you know, towns and histories are made through allocations of land, and land usage, and access to land, and people, the transformation of environments and spaces into places. And what you're doing here is allowing us to do this kind of wonderful, again, kind of transition to a new kind of place for our families in this community, and creating access and opportunity. And as all of you said very carefully, it's not just about Charter Oak and Elmwood, although it principally will be there, but it's about the whole town, right? So if you think about that as a kind of symbolic move, but also, right, in the kind of very clear pathway from elementary to middle school to Conner, this is something that is certainly about half, if not all, of the town. So that's also very exciting. The other part of the reason I signed up for the Board of Ed was to be a representative of the community, and so I very much echo my colleagues and your emphasis on community input, and I think that's critical. I like Terry's idea of kind of the virtual space. We'll certainly have town meetings and...
Bruce is...
Bruce, okay, Bruce, whatever. All you guys. But anyway, having kind of multiple fora for this kind of interaction, be it virtual or in vivo in different kinds of locations with all the relative constituents present as much as possible, that's, that's certainly a clear issue. So thank you again. So the question I have is too, I mean, along with good news always, there's always anxiety, right? And, and the anxiety about this is, whatever, in the past, there's been a concern about, you know, if we build it, will the state ask for the money back? Is there any chance that, given renovations or given building, there will be some sort of so-called clawback of funds from the state, and then we'll be up?
I guess I'd like to address that because it, it was part of the lengthy legislative process, and the answer is no. There is no danger whatsoever of the state trying to take back the dollars. The way the process will work is this. You will develop whatever plan you have concluded works best, along with the community and the council and all the stakeholders. That plan will need to be submitted to the, the State Department of Education for approval. If the State Board of Education deems that plan an appropriate one, that matches the goals of the legislation, you get the reimbursement, and it can't be taken away.
And if I can just address your historical point, I think that something that's important for the community to understand is we're talking about the potential renovation or new Charter Oak school, is that the last elementary school to be built in West Hartford was Aiken, and it was almost 60 years ago. This Board of Education and our town council have been incredible stewards of our facilities. You won't look around at other communities around us and find that it's been since the 50s or 60s since they built a new elementary school. And, and you also mentioned, you know, the economic, the economic downturn. There's a, there's an upside to that in that construction costs are way down. Construction unemployment is over 25%. So that schools are finding that they're saving millions of dollars building in an economic downturn. So we have a community that's been very responsible with its buildings, has been a very long time since a new facility, and the community has changed, and as you said, you know, this is going to be different because it's a different time. I mean, you think about the 50s and where we are now, we're a different community, and having this opportunity is an opportunity for the schools, but it's really an opportunity for the whole Elmwood, Elmwood community. So, you know, it's part of the reason we're all excited to be sitting here. But the history is really quite something and speaks to our town's ability to, I think, very manage its facilities really well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to go back to your concern for a moment and the anxiety that you raised, it is, it was a good question. I think Representative Fleishman's being a little modest because I think it was Chairman Putterman who mentioned earlier the legislative process, and several of you talked about it, and the intricacies that go on and the changes that are made. And in fact, in 2011, there was a different version of this that did have some clawback in it, and that came out this year, that we made certain that would be the case so that, to, to address your concern right on. So hats off to Representative Fleishman for seeing that through. Thank you.
And then just for the purpose of wrap-up, I just want to bring out one important point. We talked a lot this evening about 80%. The key here is that there is no minimum amount or maximum amount that's included in this legislation. So the, the stars are the limit. And I, in, in going forward, in the planning process and involving the community, I really think it's important that we think out of the box. So that's the other significant piece of this legislation, for those who are not familiar with that legislation. And again, thanks.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I do want to make two quick points. So you all have talked about the fact that there was clawback language, the clawback language is now gone. I want to give a shout-out to Ellen and to Claire Kendall from the town council, who worked with the legislators to craft the language that removed that clawback. So thank you, Ellen, while we're giving credit out, and thank you to Claire as well. She was truly instrumental in, in bringing us to, to this announcement. The second thing is that a couple, a couple of folks have said to me, "Wait a minute, why do we have to go to the state to get them to approve our plan?" And the fact is, every time we do construction and get reimbursement from the state, we have to submit our plans to the state. So this is nothing, the, the idea of going to the state is not new. Yes, what we will be bringing to the state will be a little bit broader and more comprehensive than what we have in the past, but the idea of going to the state in order to get approval to reimbursement is not, is not new. Anything, we've now got a chance?
I just want to make a couple of comments. The first one is basically, thank you again and again. I think some of our viewers may not know that, you know, a couple of you actually graduated from our school system. That must be at least 15 years ago, I would guess. But your heart is still here in this community, and you are...
Honorary.
But your children went here. So I think it's important to point out that even though your schoolings are over and you are successful adults now, and yet you really sincerely care about our community and you're doing this, and I just want to thank you on behalf of all the citizens here, that even though you're done, you're continuing, you're thinking about our kids, and, and that's really important for you to work so hard and try to help West Hartford to have a new or renovated school. That's clearly an important step. Secondly, I know Senator Baugh used to serve on this board and sitting right here. So I think from your perspective, what we need here in this community certainly is very helpful for us to get this new school or renovate this school, and for, for us to reach out to the community. It involves an educational process for the whole community to understand why and why, how important it is. You mentioned facility, and I would go beyond just the facility matters. These days, facility is only one step. But if you look at the teachers in the classroom, if you look at the goals that we want to do, we're sometime, we do some, something, sometimes we do things in reverse. College process, college as a dream, as something that you do naturally, the next step, stand things like this, renovating constantly, thinking about student centers, thinking about the libraries, the monies that put in there, we are behind. We're very behind. And then you look at other private schools. Here we are in West Hartford, our score's gone up, our facilities are old and older. It's about time. It's about time we have money to do something, looking at facility building or renovate. But the, the heart of the matter is giving teachers, educators, and everybody who works in schools, an opportunity to dream and dream big. You know, it's no longer about this classroom you set up your things. It's about what else in a classroom setting? Can we do small group activities? Can we go outside? Can we do all that? Those are the things that, beyond facility, but really is serving the educational purpose. So I, I want to thank you so much, and I know that as Chair of the Educational Committee, and you've done so much, and I think all of us said over and over again, "Thank you." Thank you very much. But I do think that the committee that we're going to form, I want us to make, to secure the fact that not just online, not just virtual, but really welcome residents from different walks of life. This is an opportunity for us, for Charter Oak. We have a very rich culture. If we can really bring people together, even casually, whatever ways we can do and get their wisdom, put their wisdom together, I think this is a very, very exciting opportunity. I've been driving by Charter Oak for 27 years, and so to me, it's personal to see something like this. It's also very personal that it's about time West Hartford has this kind of vision and continue to move forward, because we don't really have a choice, actually. We have to do this. Thank you again.
Yeah, two quick comments, one of them's a summary one. The, the first comment, though, of the notion that we have to go to the state for approval of, of our plans, my response to that is, "I sure hope so. They're coughing up 80% of the money." I mean, and you, if you think about that, whether it's 40% in a regular situation or anything else, I would want, no matter where I lived in Connecticut, I would want to know that any community that wanted to build something had to get approval from someplace else, had, it had to go through an approval process, that, that's just vetting, that, that's common sense, and I think that's fiscal responsibility. So to me, that, that's exactly what we want to have happen. I have no problem with that whatsoever. And finally, I have to trot out one of my all-time favorite quotations, because it's so apropos for, for this situation. You know, what are schools about but the building of children, really, ultimately? And so we're building a building so we can do building. And what I'm reminded of that is, is, I say, my favorite quotation from Winston Churchill when, when the Commons had been bombed in World War II, and he made the comment, "We build our buildings, and ever after, they build us." And there's a deep truth to that, and it, we ought to take that real seriously with what we intend to do at Charter Oak and what the community helps us do at Charter Oak, because how we construct this will, for the next century, help mold the educational tasks that happen inside that building. So thank you very, very much for giving us the chance to make that become a reality for this community.
All right. As much as this joyous moment, we don't want it to come to an end, I guess, end it must. The kids at Charter Oak need our support, and with the tool that you guys have given us, we look forward to bringing that to them. So thank you very much.
I don't think we're done.
All right, on to perhaps slightly more mundane topics, but also important. There is no unfinished business tonight, new business. First, ratification of Local 1303-39 ASME Council Four Custodians Contract. The recommendation is that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated pension agreement between Local 1303-39 ASME Council Four Custodians and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2014. Is there a motion? Is there a...
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion. Tom, would you like to introduce this, or should we go right to Chip and Rick?
We can go right at it. Is that okay? Acting, acting superintendent?
You're okay.
As Bruce introduced, before you for approval is a ratified agreement between the Board of Education and our custodian union, and our maintenance union, and you will vote, as it relates... And you will vote, as it relates to pension benefits only, and you'll vote on both of these settlements separately. But because we negotiated with both of them together and the settlement is the same, we'll discuss them jointly. If you remember back in 2011, the Board of Education ratified the contract between the custodial union and the maintenance union on all other benefits and wages and working conditions. The only thing we did not settle at that time was the pension benefit, and we were bringing the pension, since we couldn't come to an agreement, we were going to go to arbitration on the pension benefit. During that beginning part of that arbitration process, we started to have some conversations with the unions that were productive. So during that time period, we started talking about the defined benefit plan, the shape that it was in, defined contribution plan, different types of models that we could be looking at for new hires. And because these conversations were as productive as they were, we had waived the timeline with the arbitration process and continued that dialogue, which actually ended up taking the better part of a year, but we ended up to where we are today. You know, when we were talking about different types of models, we looked at, as I said, a defined contribution model for new hires, and then some kind of model that might take into consideration some form of a defined benefit program as well as a defined contribution program. And we would be willing to look into that type of model if we were able to make some substantial reduction to the defined benefit plan design. And at the same time, maintain the level of employee contribution into the DB plan, because our DB plan is, we're having some tough times with our pension plan, as we've discussed in the past, especially during budget time. With the economic downturns back in 2001 and 2008, we've had a significant hit on our plan assets. So to look at some kind of model that would maintain that employee contribution into the DB plan and give us some financial stability, we really wanted to take a closer look at that, to see if that was something that would be feasible for the unions. And we ended up with a plan that does just that. It's something we refer to as a hybrid plan. It's a part defined benefit plan, part defined contribution plan. And under the defined benefit plan, and this would be for new hires, so anyone hired after the ratification date would go into this hybrid plan. Under the defined benefit portion of that hybrid plan, an employee would, an existing employee gets 2% times their years of service. So, and that's how the formula works. So if they do 25 years, they get a pension that's worth 50% of their final average salary. Under this new plan, new hires would get a pension benefit that's 1% times their years of service. So if they did 25 years, they'd get 25% of their final average salary as a pension benefit. So it reduces our liability and costs by 50%, which is significant. And at the same time, employees will maintain their contribution, so they'll be making the same level of contribution into the DB plan as existing employees do. So we keep that revenue stream going into the defined benefit plan, which is what we need. And then on the defined contribution side, we will make a match of 2 and 1/4% into an employee's 457 plan, which is a governmental plan. It's similar to a 401K, but it's for governmental employees. So we will make a 2 and 1/4% into their account, and the average employer contribution for public sector DC plans throughout the state of Connecticut is about 6%. So that 2 and 1/4% is significantly lower than the average of 6% around the state. So the cost of our hybrid plan is actually lower than the cost of a straight defined contribution plan, and at the same time, keeps that level of employee contribution going into the DB plan. So it helps our DB plan, helps our taxpayers, and it's a model that we're happy, proud of, and pleased that the, both of these unions have agreed to work with us in solving a long-term problem for the town. So I hope I took a rather complicated issue and tried to simplify it as much as possible, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board had about this settlement.
Thanks for wrapping that up. I got kind of lost on the halfway part. So as I understand, this is what you're saying, it sort of limits the exposure of the town by creating this hybrid plan. What then, over, is this, will this be stable 10 years, 20 years in advance? Is it something that we revisit every 10 years? I mean, can you talk about that? And also, so that's one piece. The other question is about, who are these people? I mean, how many, how many people are we talking about and that are coming in? And you said there's a cutoff date in 2000?
Right.
Right. Those two questions.
So it applies to all new hires after tonight, for all intents and purposes. So we have roughly 80 custodians. 76 custodians and 22 or 23 maintenance employees, something like that, right around there.
60. 22?
Yeah, 22. So as each of those employees retire, the new hires will come in under this model. And it is something that will, it literally cuts our liability in half. For example, today, the liability within our pension plan is about $320 million. If we were to take all of our employees that were in that plan, put them in this new plan, our liability is $160 million. So it would cut it in half. We can't do that, unfortunately, but that's the type of impact that this is going to have long-term on our pension plan. It doesn't just stop the liability, the growth in the liability, it turns it around in the other direction, which is good. But it, you know, to your original question mark, it is something that we'll revisit often because of the tenuous state of our pension plan. So if there's something else that we need to do, we'll be back at the table with the maintenance workers at the end of this year, before, actually, their contract is up June 30th of 2013, and the custodians are the following year. So we're back at the table right away. If we need to fine tune things and look at things differently, we will do that.
Just one other comment. I just wanted to give a shout out to these workers, who I've, I mean, in all of our experience have do wonderful job. I've been more intimately involved with them at Smith, but as being part of the school and part of those families of these schools, so I'm glad, I'm very happy that this has worked out with the union and with our own side with this. So thanks.
If I could, since I'd normally be there presenting with Rick, I would say that Rick's being modest and saying it's been for the past year working on this. I mean, the contract overall, it's been more than two years. It's just a year since arbitration over this pension issue. And I think Rick's worked to come up with a solution that meets the town's needs and is acceptable to the union without fighting this out in arbitration, that's kind of a clever solution that prevents that bubble from bursting one way or the other. I think he deserves special kudos for coming up with this and putting it forward. And I don't like to compliment him, so.
Special kudos, so noted. Thank you, Rick. Anybody else?
Just a quick comment, Rick. I mean, what I like about this is that so many times we wind up with an either or. You either do this or you do that. The point of having a defined, if I'm a retired, if I'm one of these guys, even new hires, the point of having a defined benefit plan is I've got something solid. I don't care what happens in the marketplace. I don't, you know, the world could fall apart in some ways around me, but at least I know I've still protected my family. So that the fact that half of this is still a defined benefit means that for them, there's a sense of security, and that's good. The fact that the other half of it is market-based means that if there is an upside, if there is something wonderful happens economically, there is an upside to this as well. So this does really impress me as being a win-win. A win for the town because it does limit, cut our liabilities in half, but it also is a win for the, for the people that are receiving this kind of a benefit. They have the possibility of both the security and the opportunity in this. So I think this is really well-crafted, and I guess it's a testimony to what collective bargaining is supposed to be about.
Excuse me. So at UConn, we're being asked to consider something like this as well, and I've been thinking about it. Can you talk, can you give us a sense of, is this sort of the trend in municipalities in Connecticut or across the country? What is this, I mean, is indicative of the change in the economy currently or sort of a broader kind of relationship between management and unions?
The trend is definitely towards, maybe not necessarily this type of model. I think this is one, this will be one of the first you'll see in the state of Connecticut, but I think you'll see more. The trend is definitely away from defined benefit and towards a defined contribution model. The public sector is a little bit slower in getting onboard that train. The private sector did it long ago, many, many years ago. They had the ability to just freeze their plans where they were, and all, every employee, whether they're existing or new hires, would go right into a defined contribution plan. In the public sector, that's not feasible, unfortunately, with the collective bargaining process. But the trend is towards some very, very reduced defined benefit plans or moving towards a defined contribution model. And our plan, as Terry said, something that kind of meets both needs, provides something for some stability for new hires, at the same time allows them to, saves us some money, obviously, and then gives them the ability to earn some more on the defined contribution as the economy turns around.
The custodians, the 76 custodians are all full-time and part-time. Is that right?
Just full-time.
Just the full-time.
Yeah.
Part-time, separate contract?
That, the part-timers are in arbitration right now. Actually, I think we'll probably get that award in the next week or so. I got a letter from the state today, actually, that indicated that the award is out there. So I suspect we'll have it shortly.
All in favor of ratifying the negotiated pension agreement between Local 1303-39 ASME Council Four Custodians and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Next, ratification of the Local 1303-61 ASME Council Four Maintenance Contract. Similarly, recommendation that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated pension agreement between Local 1303-61 ASME Council Four Maintenance Employees and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2013. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, or are we just going right into the vote?
Same. We actually negotiated with both groups simultaneously, so it's the exact same settlement.
Okay. Any additional questions? All those in favor of ratifying the negotiated pension agreement between Local 1303-61 ASME Council Four Maintenance Employees and the Board of Education for the period July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2013? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that carries unanimously as well. Thank you. All right, Tom. You ready for your big moment?
Oh, yeah.
The superintendent's report.
Thank you. As you said before, certainly on a night like this, Karen would, is most upset not to be here for the Charter Oak piece, and just the excitement and the thanks to the delegation she would like to share, certainly, and wishes she could be here if it weren't for the family situation she would be. My favorite quote, Terry, that relates to that is Cicero, "Politics exists for the sake of noble deeds." And I would consider the allocation of funding for schools to be noble deeds, certainly. So, anyway. Another reason why Karen would certainly want to be here tonight is to talk about Dr. Eileen Howley. As many of us read, unfortunately for us, fortunately for her in many ways, Dr. Eileen Howley, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, will be leaving us on November 30. She has taken a position as Executive Director of LEARN, which is the Regional Education Service Center in the southeast corner of our state. Three and a half years of exceptional leadership Eileen's brought forward, and Henry Miller said that the real leader doesn't need to be in front here, she is content to point the way. And Eileen's pointed the way. So even if she's not here, she'll be one of our real leaders in this district. And the accomplishments from the mission framework, creating and implementing, revitalizing our curriculum review process, and I've seen it before. I presented the curriculum review process as a department supervisor, and now I've seen that work come forward and just the depth and the richness that we see now really makes people question what we're teaching, why we're teaching, why is it so important that our kids learn that? And all of us owe a debt to Eileen for that. Institution of vertical teams so that our teachers know what's happening in sixth grade, so the same things aren't being taught and that it's, we have an understanding of what's gone on before. She's helped us transition to the cross-categorical model for children with special needs in a way that always kept the focus on what's best for all children, because all of the children in this district are our children, and we want to focus on what do we need to do to best educate all of our children. She began the implementation process for Common Core State Standards. West Hartford is seen as a leader in this already. Other districts ask us what they should be doing because of Eileen's work getting us ahead. She began the work to collaborate with teachers and administrators into finding what good teaching looks like as we redesign our system for teacher evaluation and all educator evaluation. These are just some of the things Eileen's done, and she's led with a moral clarity and a dedication to our children that I find inspiring. And so she will be missed. I personally, as well as Karen, wish her nothing but the best of luck in the state of Connecticut and the southeastern state of Connecticut, but all of us will greatly benefit from her leadership at LEARN. So I just want to, on behalf of Karen, say thank you to Eileen for her time here. Now, so how do you replace somebody like that? Fortunately, within the district, we have many tremendous leaders, and we all felt that there's somebody that possesses the talents needed to be the interim Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And we believe and have named Dr. Nancy DePalma as that person. We know Nancy as the principal of Whiting Lane and as one of the most beloved principals. I've always wondered why people love her so much more than they love me, but that's true. Never mind. Nobody else wonders. But what some people forget is she was also acting principal of Hall High School while Dr. Slater was stationed in Iraq. She was the director of our pupil services department and served with distinction as a school counselor. So she brings the unique perspective of being a K-12 leader throughout the district, and that will be valued, that will help and offer stability as we continue on that path that Eileen has pointed us, pointed us to. And that means, Whiting Lane says, what about us? And fortunately, we have Karen Cookish as an assistant principal for the past six years at King Philip. And Karen has been a teacher in the district, a leader in the district. She is also somebody beloved by parents of King Philip, and she will be the interim principal at Whiting Lane School. We have every bit of faith and confidence in her leadership. This is a great opportunity for Karen and for the families of Whiting Lane to get to know her as she takes over Whiting Lane, and Nancy is only a phone call away. So we'll be posting King Philip, the position, the interim position for interim assistant principal at King Philip, and we expect to have many candidates for that position. So that's our small staffing report on this level. As far as other things going on, one of the things, and it dovetails nicely with the presentation tonight, will be on SATs and advanced placement courses. And we just were notified, Monday, Dr. Cummings shared with me, Felipe DePoy. We mentioned last year the accolades Felipe got, and he was an AP scholar, and specifically his artwork was recognized and displayed at Carnegie Hall. Well, his piece, Portrait of My Mother, has been selected by the staff of the U.S. Department of Education to be included in the Art Right Now DC, a special exhibition of national award-winning work from 2012 Scholastic Arts winners. This means that Dr. Cummings and Felipe's teacher, Sherri Ellis, have been invited to Washington DC Friday, October 12, for the celebratory ribbon cutting at the Lyndon Baines Johnson Department of Education Building, where in the lobby of the Department of Education, Felipe's work will be featured. And it's just a tremendous accolade for Felipe, his teachers, and the entire district. We support the arts in that way. So that's it for me.
I just want to quickly, and quicker than you did it, I guess, because you said it all, but just echo your comments regarding Eileen. As I said to Eileen in a note that I sent her a little while ago, you know, five years from now, we are going to be celebrating successful transition to Common Core, successful transition to whatever high school reform is going to look like, and Eileen Howley will be the reason that we will be...
Don't, don't, Eileen, I do have nice things to say.
Can I have a point of, just for clarification? We don't get to vote and say we don't want her to go, right? No? Okay. Well, Tom, you must have arranged it tonight, because those of us like Nancy and myself who are on the shorter side, I'm sure has, we will have a hard time getting through tonight, it's just too much stuff, all in one night.
So, now we are moving on to our, um, high school test score results. Tom, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. As you know, every year we report on the SAT results in the district and our advanced placement, um, results in the district. Tonight, um, presenting our results, um, I welcome Dr. Howley and Dr. Pete Cummings, along with Chip Ward, not just to look at the numbers, but what they mean and how we got there, and to really focus on both reports, but adv- the College Board recognizes West Hartford's excellence, and there's pieces of the report where they'll talk about that and really what a leader we are nationwide in advanced placement.
So, good evening. Um, I'll just say thank you, start humbling, thank you very much. What we want to do tonight, we had, uh, following the CMT report where we were saying, how can we make this even more engaging and a little different, is our plan this evening was to have Dr. Cummings come because of Conard's incredible results and distinguished, um, awards that they've received relative to AP, and bring a teacher with him. Unfortunately, the teacher is quite ill, so, um, so we won't do that. So Pete will carry the torch of both the teacher and the principal to talk a little bit about that tonight, but our plan is Chip is going to walk you through the numbers, we're going to talk about the two tests, they're two very different tests, and he's going to characterize those for us, we'll talk through that. And then Pete is going to speak a little bit more deeply about the AP diagnostic and about AP boot camp, which is something that we've received some acclaim for nationally for, um, the work that we're doing at Conard High School. So, Chip, take your way.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to report tonight on the SATs and the APs. We've been doing this now for quite a few number of years, and so I, I think the report looks pretty similar and sort of speaks for itself, so I'll just add some, some, some comments, um, and briefly go over the results, and we'll let Pete talk about it. When we talked last time about the CMT and CAP reports, I sort of brief broached the notion of necessary and sufficient tests, and, you know, a test could sort of be classified as necessary if it sort of measured skills that were, that we, that we thought we were valued as part of, you know, help meeting the board goals, and sufficient is something, sort of really measured something that sort of really captured what, what the board goals were about. So, I like to talk about the SATs and the APs sort of with that, with, with that framework in mind. And when I talk about the SAT, I want to talk about a test that I consider neither necessary nor particularly sufficient. And when I talk about the AP, I'm going to talk about a test that comes about as close as possible to identify you being necessary and sufficient. So let me first talk about, uh, the SAT. This is, I talked about last year as well, it's sort of like the Hogwarts sorting hat. I mean, it's basically designed to separate people out. I mean, the College Board spends a lot of money to have a lot of bright people there thinking about, well, how can I divide a test so that half the kids are going to get a five hundred, thirty-three percent are going to get a six hundred or higher, and five percent are going to get a seven hundred or higher. And so they spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to sort, sort all those kids out. And not terribly surprising, our sorting results have not changed substantially over the twenty-year period. If you take a look, the district average was ten thousand and fifty-two in nineteen ninety-two, and it's twenty years later now, it's interesting, we've got twenty years of history, it's ten thousand and seventy-two. So, that sort of mechanism has, has worked, you know, very well, and that's what the College Board, uh, test is designed to do. So, I mean, the results go up or down a bit. The other thing to note is you, is just an, I've talked about it before, I want to remind everybody, an artifact of the scoring system, when a teach, when students get a score, they can get a five sixty, they can get a five seventy, they can get a five eighty, they can't get a five seventy-two, they can't get a five seventy-three. So somehow we think that, uh, the test score, average scores go up by six points, that's somehow a big number. Well, it's not, because you, it's actually a point six, because you really should just take the zero off. So, just those couple things, just to give you some reminders. I've got all the data in there to, to, to highlight, if you've got any questions, we'd like to, I can answer them for you on that. But really, the, the, the test is designed to really sort out and separate out students into that, uh, bell-shaped distribution. And while it's very important in terms of helping students get into college and into, to higher qualified college, what I'd like to talk about now really is about the AP test, because that really helps prepare kids to be successful in college, regardless of which college they're going to go to. And so in many respects, I think the AP test is both, the skills that it measures in terms of kids being able to do college-ready, college-level work is really something we value very highly in the district, and we'll let Pete talk a little about it, about it, but we really want to try and expose as many students as possible to that, to help get them ready to be prepared for that college experience. And in many respects, that sort of is, you know, one of the board goals in getting these, these students ready to, to participate as enlightened citizens in the, in the broader world. That really is an excellent measure, uh, closest you can get to a single test that sort of measures that. So, if we take a look at the AP exam scores, which begin on page eleven, it's just a wonderful thing to talk about. I mean, there are just, you know, when you take a look at all the, the results for all the, the high schools in the state, you just don't see numbers like this. I mean, Conard had five hundred and seventy students taking eleven hundred exams. You know, it's seventy-five bucks, it's like, that's seventy-five grand direct to the College Board. We're, we're a good customer of the College Board, just at one school. The average score is excellent, we had, um, the number of exam takers increased by four percent, the participation rate, which I define just as the total number of exam takers divided by the eleventh and twelfth gate enrollment, it's not the, you know, it's not the exact best, but I've been doing it for years, is the highest ever at seventy-eight percent. Hall also has, has excellent, um, uh, increasing, um, sorry, high number of students and high number of exams. Its participation rate is around fifty-eight percent, but that's in terms of the individual, the individual tests. Then if you take a look on page twelve, I'll just highlight the AP scholars, these are the numbers of students who have reached various levels in terms of their entire academic career, and these are mutually exclusive groups, so you can sort of add these numbers up to get, and get an idea. So we had seventy-two AP scholars at Conard and fifty-two at Hall. Then we had AP scholars with honors, um, who get slightly more, they take more exams and get higher average scores. AP scholars with distinction take even more exams and get, get higher scores. And then you have the National AP Scholars, which are really amazing in terms of students who are taking, uh, earn four or more, uh, four or higher on eight AP exams and an average of four on all exams taken. We have nineteen students in the district that earn those honors. AP is not, is just one of the ways that students can get that college experience. We also participate in the UConn Early College Experience, the ECE. And page thirteen details, uh, the courses that students are enrolled in, that they're getting college credit for, um, that, um, can be accept, well, they, not, not all schools, colleges and universities accept that, and many of them do accept that, and that can be, they get them for twenty-five dollars per credit, which is substantially below what the, the full market rate is at, at UConn. So it's a substantial advantage to our students. And we've gone substantial increase of enrollment from three hundred and forty-four in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, to six hundred and six students earning credit in two thousand and eleven, twelve. The other thing I want to highlight is the Advanced Placement Diagnostic, which is this audit that the College Board comes in and does, because it's an innovation school district, that gave us the opportunity for them to come in and complete this diagnostic. It's a very extensive multi-day process where they come in and review, uh, what types of learning environments we have, how we use data to inform instruction, what type of support we offer teachers, students and families, and what type of professional development we apply. And they called, they classify schools into three different categories, basic, intermediate, and advanced. And what's Hartford was classified as advanced, and we sort of wanted to qualify, well, how many of you qualified as advanced? And the answer was very, very few. I think it's a number less, less than, you know, less than two. But we don't know. And then finally, I want to talk about the performance in the board indicator, the, you as a board have set a performance indicator that you want seventy percent of high school graduates who enter high school as ninth graders to successfully complete at least one advanced placement course. That's a huge number, and I'm glad to report that for the class of two thousand and twelve, uh, both Conard and Hall met that standard. Seventy percent at Conard and seventy-three percent of the graduates at Hall, uh, had successfully completed at least one AP course. So that just is a brief synopsis of the summary of the results and why I think they're so important, but let's turn it over to Pete, or Eileen, sorry.
I've asked Pete to say a little bit more about the AP diagnostic, because this is a new process that the College Board is engaged in, really trying to study school districts to say, what is it that's working that helps, um, students to want to participate in these programs, want to, um, take these courses and take these examinations. And so I've asked Pete if he would just elaborate a little bit more on that this evening for you.
Sure. Good evening, good to see you. You know, one of the things that Chip and Eileen talked about and that you know well is that AP participation by students really is a full district effort. It's not just Conard, not just Hall, it really does start in elementary school, and we know that by the time students get to us, they really are well-prepared to take on the challenge, and it's something that's happened over time. You know, leadership of Chuck Landros, Tom Moore at Conard really have set the stage for what we're doing. And when the AP, uh, College Board came to really look at what we're doing, their real question was, why are you successful? What's really happening with, with what's going on? And the process was, as Eileen indicated, a rigorous one. They came and they observed classes for three days. They met with our teachers, they met with our students, they met with our department supervisors, they met with, uh, central office, uh, administrators, and they really asked us a lot of questions about the, uh, the nitty-gritty of what we do. And, um, it was a great review process, because it really allowed us to get feedback from outside of the district to both confirm what we thought we were doing well and to help us ask questions about how can we get better. And so, you know, when you see our outcomes, one of the things that the College Board really confirmed was that it goes well beyond our AP teachers, who are excellent. Our AP teachers work very hard, they spend hours with our students, and I know, you know, our board reps would confirm that. And, but it goes well beyond that, because before our students get to that AP class, there's a lot of hard work that happens in the feeder classes, in the feeder pathways. One piece that, um, we really got a lot of positive feedback from in the AP, uh, diagnostic was the idea that we firmly believe across the district that AP is for everyone, that it is the most rigorous courses that we offer, and that every single student should have the opportunity to take at least one college-level class before they graduate. That is a mantra that we say to every eighth grader that's coming into Conard High School, we reconfirm it with our ninth graders, and our students hear it throughout their career while they're with us. The second thing that really, um, impressed the College Board was the depth of relationships that we have with students, that, uh, we work very hard to include students in building community, building culture, and creating high academic expectations. And it's just part of the fabric of who we are as a district, and that was one of the key findings that they had. Now, there's lots that we do to make that happen. Certainly thoughtful planning, uh, very careful placement of students in classes, we spend a lot of time thinking about who's going to take what when. Having multiple offerings for students, the support of the board and the wider community to really enable us to be able to have such a program. You know, all of those things are important, our commitment to professional development for our teachers, so that they are constantly getting better, and they're always looking at what they're doing and refining their practice. All of those things that really were things that they confirmed about what we're doing well. One piece where they really helped us to think more deeply was how are we continuing to build the skills of our students in terms of having those college-ready skills when they walk into classes? So if I'm a student that may not start ninth grade as someone who is quite ready for a college-level class, what are we doing to help those students to build those skills so that they can access those classes before they graduate? Uh, one of the ways that we are doing that, and Eileen alluded to this, and, you know, Elise would have talked about this quite a bit, is the AP boot camp. And what that was, was an intentional effort on our part to invite all of our students and who are taking an AP class and really build the skills that they need to be successful in a college-level class. So, critical reading, critical writing, time management, organization, test-taking skills. All of those things are pieces that we know make students successful when they get to a rigorous college-level class. A lot of time, that doesn't happen by accident. Those are things that students learn over time. They're not just something that you, you know, come to the table with automatically. And there are things that we know we can intentionally teach students, so we do. And, you know, some of the data that we're collecting about that is that typically when we had a student who was a first-time AP taker or a student for whom, you know, AP, an AP class was a stretch, a lot of times they would try it, they would enter, and they would drop in the, in the first quarter. Of the ninety students who were in the AP boot camp, all of them are still enrolled in AP classes. And so, you know, for us, that's very important data, because it shows us that when they walked in, they felt ready. It was an incredible effort by the whole community. So we had our teachers come in, volunteer their time on a night, you know, a week in August at night from six till eight, to come into Conard and work with the students that they would be having that fall. That was on top of and was built on, we, uh, started also an AP preview this year. So all of the students, um, met with their next year's AP teachers in June. So they met with them, they spent half an hour with them, they sat, they went over the summer work, they got a preview of the course of what they're enrolling for, really started to build the relationships that we know are so important to student success. So, the findings of the AP diagnostic really coincide with what we're trying to do as a school. You know, we know that when kids try hard, they can do it. We know that when we send messages that we believe that they can make it happen, that kids can make it happen. And we know that we have to constantly be re-examining what we do as a school and what we do as teachers to help students access this rigorous course material. And so, um, we're continuing to collect data, we're continuing to look at how our students are doing over time. But, you know, with the support of the board, with the support of central office, we really are in a pathway to continue to reach students that, um, in a more traditional school, may not be taking AP classes, and really encouraging every student to, uh, take those college-level courses.
We're prepared to take any questions you may have.
I, since we're quoting quotes, since we're turning out quotes, I just had to say one thing I thought of, um, from one of my favorite Dr. Seuss quotes. Yes, directed to Eileen, which is, uh, "Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." And I'm very happy that you happened to our district, um, although we will be crying when it's over. Chip, I wish you wouldn't sugarcoat how you feel about the SATs. Guess what's one I did better on? Not the one you're impressed with. I want to be, if I'm going to be intellectually honest, um, when we, when we see test scores go up in any situation, we say, wow, that's really great. And when they go down, we say, well, what happened to the rest of the world? But I can't help asking, did SATs as a whole, because I know there's trends nationally, did, based on tests, did the trends go down or are they normalized?
They're, they really don't change that much. I mean, they, uh, the Connecticut average, I think, decreased, um, the Connecticut average went down about five points, um, and was down six points last year, so they've dropped eleven points in, in two years. Though, a large fraction of that can be, you know, there's, there's been a substantial increase in the participation rate as I think many of the, um, urban districts have gone to everybody taking the SAT course, so. But I mean, the, the, that's point number one. Point number two is that, that's, the scores, while they may have gone down or gone up, I mean, the, the change of five points out of, out of a total of a thousand is really inconsequential. I mean, in essence, it's, it's within the, the random standard margin of error, so I wouldn't even consider it, uh, a difference. And if you take a look at it long-term, in nineteen ninety-two, the average score was, uh, reading, math and reading combined was a thousand and one. In two thousand and twelve, twenty years later, the average score was a thousand and two. So I mean, if there, if that is not stability in terms of a score, which also makes sense with how the test is construction, constructed, it's not saying, how much do you know? It's how much do you know relative to a set, a set of expectations? And that's really, uh, you know, and a just, a normalized distribution of how, how much you know. So, yes, the College Board does an excellent job in keeping that center line- that is not stability in terms of a score, which also makes sense with how the test is construction, constructed. It's not saying, "How much do you know?" It's how much do you know relative to a set, a set of expectations. And that's really, you know, and a just normalized distribution of how, how much you know. So, yes, the College Board does an excellent job in keeping that center line center.
Okay. I have one follow-up quirky question on the ACTs. I'm just thinking if I'm anyone reading this, I always ask the questions that pop into my head. Most popular exam, AP exam at Conner is English, and at Hall, it's psychology. Just a quirk, or the numbers close, or is there?
No, I mean, the influence of those courses is often by the teachers who teach them. And teachers who teach them over time, just as with any craft, you learn the nuances versus the first time you teach something versus the 10th time you teach something. You, you have nuances in how you teach it. And I would turn to Mark as a college professor to recognize that, you know, there are certain things that you do. And then teachers have a following because they say, "Wow, this was so interesting," and these kinds of things. And so it builds that way. So it tends to be, you know, there is a, a teacher effect, if you will, of what students gravitate toward and their experience in that class. And they talk to each other. I'd ask your reps, but chances are you talk to each other, right, about what the teachers you like and the teachers you don't, what you like about the classes and what you don't. And that, that's, that's an influence. And also kids' interest in where they're going and what they're doing. But that's certainly one of the effects on.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, let me ask you guys. You, what's your experience with the, the APs and, and do you feel encouraged, supported, or?
Press your button.
Well, for the APs at Conner, since I know Dr. Cummings has been pushing to have everyone take, I think it's all positive. And it kind of like, it helps us relate with everyone. And we're all like, you know, have a goal of, like, passing the exam. And the teachers have great support. And it also like shows that we're all on the same level and that we're not like, oh, some people are taking SAP, so they're better, I guess. But no, it shows that we're on the same level, I think.
I guess, well, what I was going to say about the English language class, because I actually took that one last year. I think that class at Hall has a particularly tough reputation as an academic class, not the AP exam itself. And so that deters people, even though it was probably like the best class I've ever had in high school. And psychology has a reputation of being like the easy class. Like, I mean, it kind of is, it's like the easiest AP at Hall, pretty much. And I don't know, I guess I just had like a comment on like what was said earlier about like APs being important to challenge students, that like we should all be like able to and like have our schools want us to take the most challenging course available to us at some point. But I just like, would like to add that I think there are some courses, at least at Hall, I know there's 21st Century Literature, and that's definitely as hard as any AP course, because I'm taking that concurrently with AP Lit. And I'm pretty sure that's like, I've got a lower grade in that class right now than AP Lit. So I don't know. I just think that there are other ways outside the APs. And even it says, there was like a little note made that it's, the intention of having students take the AP classes is not necessarily to pass the exam, but just to be exposed to the challenging college-level material. And I mean, I guess, like, I think if you, if that's not the intention, like, why can't there be more classes that don't necessarily have an AP exam attached and like are just challenging by the nature of their own curriculum? And, sorry, I guess I have a continued comment that I know specifically for the science classes at Hall, there's a very large gap between the standard science and the AP science. And I've heard many of my peers complain over the years about why there is no honors science, because they feel like they're being babied in the standard versions, but they know they're not like up to. I don't know. I think if like we could detach ourselves a little bit from the exam and just look at it more as like having some challenging classes, I think that would benefit everyone.
Extraordinarily insightful, which is really what the whole push is in the Common Core State Standards, which is about increasing the rigor in every classroom so that our standard-level courses need to push to really higher levels of thinking for kids. It's not about just rote learning. It's not about that. And it's the kind of learning that Kendall is describing, which is how do we create opportunities for all kids? And that goes to what Dr. Cummings has described as well, which is you can't just enter an AP class as a junior without appropriate preparation on how to read, how to read deeply, how to reread text. You know, in this day and age, it's hard to get kids to really refocus on a text multiple times. It's hard to get an adult to refocus on a text multiple times. So to do that is the, are the building blocks for success in college. You have to read text, reread it, read it deeply, and then compare and contrast it and analyze it and write about it and have something fresh and new to say in response to it. And that's hard work. So we want to cultivate that, that early, make kids believe that they can see themselves do that. And that's, that's really the goal. So Kendall's really hit on something that each of the disciplines is grappling with right now, which is how do we raise the level of rigor in, in every class for children? Because it will enable the college potential pathway. And we want every kid to have that as an option.
If I could just add to that piece, and this is something that I've heard Dr. Cummings talk about, and it's really been a mantra, and it's to your point, very much so. We know the curriculum of an AP course is vetted. I mean, we, we know the exam's good. We, we know that it's rigorous. But sometimes people think, when we talk about challenging, we're specifically saying AP. We're not. We've always said, there are people that should be taking auto-tech, and that would be the most challenging course they would ever take. And if they're interested, that's where they should push themselves. And that's really what we're talking to about kids. And that's why you see a wide variety here, is what do you love? Because that's where you can push yourself, because then you'll love doing it. And that's really what we're trying to get to, is how do you push?
I would, I would just add, one of the things that we use specifically in the language that we talk about is college-level or rigorous, to your point, Kendall, and is not just AP. AP is the vehicle that we have at the moment to be able to really make sure that our students are well-prepared for post-secondary planning. And so, we know that when students are engaged in rigorous classes, when they go to a post-secondary college, you know, tech ed, whatever it is that they chose, choose to do, they are much more likely to be successful and finish that program when they walk away from that experience. And that's part of our push to make sure that when students receive that diploma, they're ready to move on to the next learning experience.
Some comments and questions. Yeah, I, I'm on the other side of this, right? So I get students who have AP, students I was honors advisor for many years for history students coming in, seeing ECE exam results in AP. And, I mean, I love your point. I mean, to de-emphasize the SAT and talk about APs and talk about ECE programs, that's, that's an excellent priority. I have, I, I can agree more. I feel the SAT is a very vexed, problematic test. And in my own graduate program that I run, we don't even look at JERIs for a lot of reasons, because they're biased tests, right? It's not just about, there is a norm, there is a norm line, but it's, it's indicated to certain kinds of populations that can take the test and have those kinds of successes. My comments are linked to that as well. So yeah, I think that's great. And getting, having these opportunities for students, not only to take the test and take the class, but as you say, get ready for all the different exigencies of life in college, keeping, timekeeping, which is wonderful. And so it's a great, it's a, it's an excellent priority for the district. And it really helps to demystify because that's one thing we see, students get to college and they're just completely freaked out. Kendall's point is, I think, right on as well. And one thing that I've been concerned about, and I've heard people talk about kind of brain drain of APs that, in a kind of, both a kind of pejorative way, but also in a way to kind of emphasize the fact that what it does, there are different kinds of classes for AP, but it's, there's a relative homogeneity to these intro courses that can pull kids away from more innovative courses necessarily. So your point is really well-taken about, you know, what does it mean when you have 21st Century Lit or whatever you call these kinds of options? And I think there's a culture of that. And there's a kind of market competitiveness built into this system as well. That's not our fault as a district, but it's the nature of college applications that leads to kind of consumption and then marketing of oneself, having this kind of enormous repertoire of AP courses. And I see this in a kind of fetishized way with students coming in with our, like, a year and a half worth of college credit coming in. And it's almost detrimental because college is different from even getting prep, prep time in AP, right? So it's, it's complicated and vexed, but I think all, and at the end of the day, I think the kind of work that, that's being done is right on. I'm curious about the Common Core State Standard and the, and the impact that'll have, because one thing is the test has set a kind of flatline normative result, but it also means that it's pegged to a kind of education that feeds into that test. So if the education shifts, will the test results, I think, they'll probably shift the test to accommodate for the Common Core. I mean, in other words, there's a kind of relationship between secondary and post-secondary education. That, I'm just, I'm just curious about your thoughts about that. I have some other things, but.
I think just on the, my commentary on the smarter balanced assessment is that that'll be a norm, that will be a criterion-referenced assessment as opposed to a norm-referenced assessment, to the best of my knowledge, which is you, you judge it against a set of criteria, not norms to find them, the line that Chip was describing. So I think they have different purposes. I think it will raise the question, what is the, the relevancy of SAT in terms of, as an indicator of college preparedness relative to other indicators of college preparedness? That's a larger, I think, academic community conversation that needs to continue to take place. You know, what are the best measures? And, and how do we know? And, and, you know, and how do we develop children who have, who have passion and interests and, and desires to want to continue to grow and learn, not just get a score on an exam? And how do we cultivate that? I think that's an important part of the story in the Common Core, is how do, how do we actually do that? So I think there's lots of discussion to be had there. And when you see some of the types of, I believe in early November, we'll bring to you some sample-type work that we're asking students to do that really parallels an AP-type experience, but in a standard-level course, you'll see that that's, that's really the goal. So as I say, I think there's work to be done, but it's also work to be done at the college level as well in terms of what their expectations are. Because right now, that's still a gateway assessment for kids to enter. Not in all colleges, but, you know, and that's merging and changing, but it's still something that, that they use. And so therefore, it has a, you know, no matter how we perceive it, it's, it is part of the gatekeeping process for college.
Thank you. Question about access. And I know that, Dr. Cummings, you've talked about this, and it's, it's laid out here. Just some specifics, especially in the wake of the, what's happened in Hartford recently around access to training and, and funding for, you know, SAT pre-testing and these kinds of things. Boot camp, there was mentioned there's $75 for this, $25 for that. I mean, they're small amounts, but they build up and some families can't afford them. So that's a question about access. The other one is a volun, is a volunteer option. I mean, I, do you have college professors coming into these classrooms? I mean, I, it'd be, I'd love to go into a history AP class and say, bring a syllabus and say, okay, this is, this is what this looks like and answer, be able to answer questions.
Technically, some of our teachers are college professors.
I know that.
I want to just sort of, you know, we get ECE credit. They actually have to meet.
Right, I understand. And to that, to that point, and I've talked with you about this, I vet the ECE test for my institute. And so that's another, and I have to, from that perspective, it's, it's very rigorous. And the teachers not only have to get vetted, but they have to do more professional training to become adjunct teachers for that unit as well. So it's a, it's a good, it's a good process. But anyway, to the point of access, I'm curious.
Sure. You know, we make sure that any student that wants to take an AP class and may not have the resources to be able to do that or to take the exam, we work with the College Board and with the Board of Ed to make sure that every student is able to do that. And so we offer support for families that can't do it. We have different sources of funding, both from the, as I said, from the College Board and from the free, the free and reduced lunch students that may be taking AP exams, we get reimbursed for, for example. And, you know, we also build in some funding along the way to make sure that any child that wants to do it can take the class. In terms of support services that we do, such as AP boot camp, we offer that free of charge to students. And so we build that into some of our program budgets as we move forward so that, and we were able to, you know, make it happen this year. We also write grants, quite honestly, to be able to make that happen and be able to support it so that any student that wants to, you know, take advantage of the opportunities there isn't held back by a lack of funds.
Okay. Thank you very much. By the way, for the folks at home, we didn't go through kind of a extensive reporting of the data. The data's available on the website if you want to take a look at, right? Is it up yet? It's up?
It's up.
This doc, right, this doc.
On, under the board.
Right, under the board, under the current board agenda. So if you want to take a look at the specific data, feel free, whps.org. We now turn to the personnel report. Mr. Rick Ledwith returns to report.
Hello again. Personnel report is on page 24 of each of your board, board packets, and reflects the changes in staffing that have occurred during the first month of the school year. In addition to these changes, I just, as Tom alluded to in the superintendent's report, we have several, more than several administrative leadership changes occurring throughout the district, which will obviously, you know, evolve into a recruitment process as we move through this school year. Kind of the three big ones are the Hall principalship, the Duffy principalship, and of course, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Now, with regards to the Hall and Duffy principalships, we will do a national recruitment. That will begin probably right after the holidays. We'll post that position nationally, right, or probably that first week in January. Between now and then, we'll be meeting with Hall, with the Hall community and the Duffy community, both parents and teachers and students at Hall, actually, to develop a leadership profile. And this helps us to identify the types of leadership characteristic, characteristics and traits that the community is looking for at both Hall and Duffy. So we'll be working on that leadership profile between now and December. So there will be, will be some work going on for both of those positions as we move through that recruitment process. And we'll keep the Board updated as we move through the school year in terms of how those things are progressing. Tom, and mentioned as well that Karen Cookish is moving over to Whiting Lane as the interim principal. And that leaves her position that we have posted for. We've posted it internally only. Between our Leadership Academy graduates, Leadership Academy participants, as well as our extensive list of teacher leaders, we feel we have a very strong internal pool that can assume, many strong candidates that can assume this position on an interim, interim basis as we move through the rest of the year. The closing for that position is next week. We'll interview shortly after. And we would hope to give that person some transition time with Karen at King Philip. And then Karen moves over to Whiting Lane. She'll have some transition time with Nancy. Then Nancy comes in the central office and she'll have some transition time with Eileen. So a lot of moving pieces there. So it'll be a, a busy, busy year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board had regarding those processes or the report overall.
Great. Thanks. Routine matters. Approval of minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 18th, 2012. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 18th, 2012. Is there a motion?
Some.
Ellen, is there a second?
Second.
Now gone, second. Any discussion, any suggestions for changes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 18th, 2012, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Information and reports. Do any board members have communications and reports from other boards or organizations?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I, I would just like to comment on, I think, I'm sure I'm behalf of the Board, that we continue to send our love and support to the, to Libin Ellen's family. And we, we miss them. Yeah, I wanted to just let folks know that Zaman Zaleski, who is a fifth grader at Charter Oak, who is in the middle of a 52-week course of treatment for a brain tumor, and there is going to be a fundraiser put on by the Charter Oak family on October 20th at St. Mark's Parish in, on Quaker Lane. It's a pasta dinner with the works. It's $10 per person, $30 for a family of four. It will be emceed by Bob Maxon of NBC Connecticut. And I know it's, it's, tickets are selling out quickly, I understand. It's amazing show of support for this family. And also, they are also looking for silent auction items and people to donate dessert. And if you can attend, there is also a way to donate. And there is a form for this. And I will post it on our Facebook page. And I note that one of the organizers, Nicole Seeger, is in the audience tonight if anybody has questions for her after the meeting. So, thank you.
This Saturday, there's the Park Road Parade. I'm sure the weather is going to be very nice. I think we paid our dues for the weather. So it's going to be very nice on Saturday. It's a lot of fun. The Elmwood Community and Park Road Business Association put, you know, they, they put a good show, good food. A lot of people visit each other and kids, everybody's welcome. So it's Saturday. I think it starts at 10:30.
All right. Reports from student board representatives. Do either of you have a report this evening? Yep, go ahead. Who wants to go first?
Well, for our sophomores and juniors, there's the upcoming PSAT, which they can do the National Merit Scholarship. And it's a, basically a preview for the SAT, which they're going to be taking coming up. And that's on the 17th. And for all, for our fall, our fall sports, everything's going well. And actually, one of our coaches, Coach Sursasima, Coach C, the football coach, is being inducted to the CHSCA Hall of Fame at the upcoming Yukon game this Saturday, I think, which is good, and good recognition.
Week from this.
Oh, week from this Saturday. We have our, the band orchestra and choir concerts coming up. And our fall play is beginning their rehearsal for their production.
What's the production?
No, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, this Saturday, the Hall High School Student Association had hosted Fall Fest, which is like, I guess, outdoor fair of sorts that involves like, rides, moonbounces, food, lots of club booths and sports booths to, to accompany the Hall football game against South Windsor, which we won. And that was a big success. Usually, we don't break even and we lose money on the event, but this year, it looks like we broke even. There were a lot of people in attendance. The whole SA, which is stronger than ever, I think has 50 members now from across the classes, really worked together to pull it out at the somewhat last minute, even with the bad weather. But it was very successful. Generally, our sports teams are doing well. Mr. Ironhorn also wanted me to mention that there's a freshman choir concert on October 10th at 7:00 PM, so we're all excited for that. And I guess another note about the Student Association, recently, there's been a lot of complaints from Hall students about the cafeteria food and certain changes, specifically having to do with the removal of pickles and salt from the cafeteria in order to meet new nutrition standards. Yes, there's outrage over the lack of pickles for the burgers that they serve, I think, like, once a month or something in the cafeteria. Apparently, pickles are not allowed anymore. So, the SA organized a meeting with the Head of Nutrition Services and some of, one of the, like, heads of the cafeteria at Hall. And we discussed, like, what, if anything, can be done to rectify this horrible situation. Tragedy. And it seems like we, the executive board, of which I am a part with, the Vice President, President, Secretary, Secretary and Treasurer, have like, come to terms with the fact that we can't technically do anything to change the national nutrition standards that we now have to meet. But the Nutrition Services people are very understanding, and they really want to make us happy and, I guess, fill our stomachs with the things that like, we would most like to, or most enjoy eating. So, they're willing to work with us in terms of what foods, specifically like, fruits and vegetables, we'd prefer to have served to us, and possibly to come up with some compromises that would allow us to have some of the junkier foods that we teenagers enjoy, featured in the cafeteria on certain occasions. So, we'll be probably hosting maybe student forums or posting general questions to the student body of like, what types of like, healthy foods they would like to see, and what major food changes they would like to see in the cafeteria meal plan. So, we're excited about that. That's pretty much it.
Well, that would be an interesting conversation, and we look forward to that. I understand the, as, the, that Hall Highlights was basically put Friday afternoon, two weeks ago, when word came down that Dr. Slater was moving on. So, that was a great lesson for the Hall Highlights staff in how to address breaking news. So, very cool. Future business, announcement of meeting dates. The next meeting will be Tuesday, October 16th, 2012, in this room in Town Hall. That is also the night of the second presidential debate. So, we are going to try to be done by five minutes before this time on that night, so we can all do our civic duty and get home and watch the debate. The following meeting will be Wednesday, November 7th, which will be the day after Election Day. We're not meeting on Tues, typically, we'd meet on that Tuesday. We're not going to meet on that Tuesday. We'll meet the following night, Wednesday, November 7th. Are there any requests for agenda items, future agenda items? We now return to comments from visitors. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board? Mr. Joyce, as indicated here in the green book, three minutes per individual, 20 minutes per subject matter.
As you know, three of your recent graduates suffered untimely, early, unnecessary deaths recently. We failed them. Somehow, we failed them, and we don't know where, or how, or why. The statistics reviewed tonight and the discussions, why not help us to uncover these, or answer these nagging questions? So, I was, last time, advocating for teaching about religion in schools, even though there are principles of separation in church and state. Because for many, it has a well-worn quality and a sense of comfort, especially in troubled times. Because religion has always been in the schools. It is impossible to take religion out of schools, teachers, students, administrators, janitors, cafeteria workers. We all bring it with us and teach it to the children, one way or another. Maybe it comes out in your compassionate response to those around you. Maybe it seeps in with your selection of class materials or your storytelling. It is a part of you, and you take it wherever you go. And we learn about love. When we learn about love, we learn about religion. It is in history and social studies, art and literature, and even in the sciences we teach. There is a difference between teaching religion or promoting a particular religious worldview and teaching about religion from a non-sectarian perspective. It is not acceptable at, it is not acceptable, what is not acceptable are the times and instances where religion is preached, proselytized, or dogmatic, or dogma is practiced and forced upon another person. That is unconstitutional. Teaching about religion in public schools is not unconstitutional. Much of the instruction in regular courses highlighting, highlighting religion is informed by ignorance, stereotype, and unexamined secretarism. Unfortunately, it is easy for this to slip into the content unconsciously and consciously. Rather than avoiding the academic study of religion in public schools because of its inherent complexity, teachers need training, opportunities, and resources to learn about the study of religion for themselves and how religion pertains to their discipline. Religion can be taught from a comparative and multicultural lens that emphasizes diversity. Like other specialty areas, teachers and educators need to gain knowledge and skills, and a skill base to creatively teach about religion in a constitutionally sound, intellectually responsible, and educationally motivated, and innovative ways. Knowledge about religion may just turn out to be the anchor that saves our childrens from the rocks.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing no one, there's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Now gone. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night.